For those of you in the back, there's about four seats right up here in the front row if you'd like to come up. We're going to be closing the doors here in a couple of seconds, so if you could make yourself comfortable. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple housekeeping rules. If you could please put your phone on silence. Could you raise your hand if you're an Edmonton Oilers fan? You're definitely the minority. I am listening to the game live, so if I zone out for a sec, it's because Jaeger just scored. We've asked the facility to get some more chairs, so at some point we're going to try to put some more chairs here because there's about 100 Oilers stands in the back. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Brock Harrington, that's my follow-up here in the front row, so I will not be telling any jokes tonight. I apologize in advance for my funny accent, I was born in Nova Scotia and I spent a lot of my life in Indiana. I am the president of the local Chamber of Commerce, and I will be your chairperson this evening. The forum is being hosted by the Drumheller District Chamber of Commerce as well as Alberta Teachers Association Drumheller Sublocal. Our volunteers this evening are timer Kathy Little, screeners Heather Bits, Virginia Salkowski, and Brandon Bolden. We do have several runners in the room, that would be Marley Henney and Trudy Green. Bill Wolf is the audio technician, everyone can hear me fine in the back, Jason? I'm good, thank you. I just want to go over the format for tonight, I also want to point out that this is not a Dragons game, so there will be no hooting and hollering and cheering unless it's Jaeger scoring with McDavid in the corner. So, the general format for this evening, we will begin with each candidate presenting their platform followed by a short break. We have 19 people, they each get three minutes, that's going to take us up until about 7:30. After the break, there will be a question and answer period. If anyone has a question that they'd like to submit, we have runners here, you were given the opportunity to get a piece of paper earlier, please fill that out and hand it to one of these guys in the corner. After the question period, we will finish with each candidate summarizing their platform. At this time, I would like to read the rules and regulations for this evening's proceedings. Pay attention. Candidates will have three minutes to expand upon their political platform. The format of the presentation is at the discretion of the candidate. The timer will give a 20-second warning, which is a yellow card, and ring a bell at the end of the allotted time. No candidate will be allowed more than their allotted time, and I will kick the candidate off if necessary. During the question period, questions will be received from the floor in written form. I will read the written questions and address them to the candidates. Please note, candidates have been pre-arranged into predetermined groups in an effort to get through as many questions as possible in the allotted time. The reason that we did that is that there is no sense asking the same question to 17 people. At the end of the evening, everyone that's up here will get a copy of all the questions so that they may respond back to all of you to those questions that they were not asked, so no one will not have the ability to answer a question. At the end of the evening, all the questions will be compiled and circulated to the candidates. From there, it's up to them on how they will choose to respond. Many candidates have social media profiles or websites they are using to communicate with candidates, and we have suggested it may be worthwhile for them to respond to the questions submitted through those methods. The screeners or myself will rule out of order any questions deemed inappropriate, offensive, derogatory, or personal attacks. Again, this is not a Dragons game. I will rule out of order any person who unreasonably attempts to use the question period as a platform for expressing a point of view on any issue. Answers to the questions will be limited to one minute per candidate in order to maximize the number of questions that can be fielded in the time allotted. The question period will be a minimum of 45 minutes to a maximum of 60 minutes, or if the Flames are up 10-0, I could probably hang around an extra half hour. Candidates will each have one minute after the question period for a rebuttal or to summarize their platform. Now, I would like to introduce the candidates, again, my name is Brock Harrington. We have Heather Colberg and Cheryl Shaw running for mayor. Excuse me if I mess up anybody's last name, we have Christine Demott, Linda Brock, who's not here, she's feeling ill tonight, probably watching the Flames, Margaret English, Elizabeth Gallagher, Jay Garbutt, John Graham, Lisa Hanson-Zacharak, Alan Kendrick, Patrick Kalafa, Tony Locker, Fred McWecky, Tara McMillan, Dwayne Nagy, Greg Poulson, Peter Rhodes, Kalon Sykes, and Tom Zariski. Everybody good? Excellent. At this time, I would like to invite Cheryl Shaw to come up, and she will commence her three-minute speech.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Shaw, and my goal is to represent you, the citizens of Drumheller, as your mayor. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a third-generation Drumhellerite. My grandparents moved to the area back when Drumheller was just a dream. I've been able to see our little town grow and change greatly over the years. I'm proud of our roots. Drumheller was rough and tough coal mine at the turn of the century, and my father, John York, worked in the valley mines spending over 50 years of his life down below. I'm a proud mother and grandmother with two adorable grandsons that inspire me to work hard to improve this community for them as they grow up in this beautiful valley. I've enjoyed watching our town grow into a hub for oil and gas, and then branching out into tourism and ecotourism, becoming one of the biggest tourist destinations on the Prairies. I believe if we all work together with common goals and stay positive, we can improve our economy, our services, and our quality of life. Over the course of the past 13 years, I've gained extensive experience in municipal governance and policy, which I feel is extremely important. This is quite unique differences in running a municipality versus running a private business. In fact, I would highly recommend, based on my own experience, that anyone wishing to serve as mayor should first serve a term on council to gain that much-needed experience and understanding required to make the best decisions for our community to thrive and grow. If you put your trust in me as your mayor, I will work tirelessly to represent Drumheller, all of Drumheller, from East Cooley to Nakmoin and Midland. I have several plans and ideas that I would like to see investigated and implemented. Each of these 16 specific items are outlined in detail on my website at cherylshaw.ca, and I encourage you to please review them. I can summarize all my plans into two main points. Better communication and forward-thinking ideas. Change is hard. We often are afraid of change, but as we grow as a community and improve our quality of life, we must adapt our town to the changes that life is throwing at us with ever-increasing speeds. Here's the thing, I don't just want to talk about change because that's easy, and let's face it, talk is cheap. No, I want to implement change, that's why I will make two pledges to you right here and right now. If I cannot implement at least half of my platform items in the first term as your mayor, I will not seek another. Secondly, I will at most only serve Tertunes maximum. I feel that the job as mayor should never exceed two terms regardless of success, which ensures that the position and the ideas stay fresh. In closing, I have experience in running a municipal government, I will be a strong voice to represent Drumheller. I will strive to build an effective town council that improves communication to you and from you, and I have concrete achievable goals that I will achieve within the next four years. So, on October 16th, vote for Cheryl Shaw, vote for a voice for the future of Drumheller. Thank you.
For those of you in the back, there are at least three or four seats in here in the front row. Next, I'd like to introduce Heather Colberg.
Good evening. My name is Heather Colberg, and I would be honored to be your mayor. You see, I decided to run for mayor for two reasons. One, I love this valley, and I wanted to give back. And two, I want to make a difference. You see, I've spent the last few months gaining over 754 pages of stuff here that people have given, they want ideas, suggestions. They're looking for someone that's willing to listen to them, and that's what I'm prepared to do. You see, I have a list of all kinds of things on heatherformayor.com, but the top two things that I've been asked about is economic development and communication. See, if we don't fill these buildings to fill these homes so that we can as a community all survive, then really it's going to be difficult to do anything. So, the top priority will be economic development, and the second is communication. People want to know what's going on, people want us at Town Hall to listen to them, they want to have a voice. So, this makes me think we have to think outside the box. What I'm lacking in experience, I offset with strong leadership, business knowledge, and an ability to pull people together. See, this is a business, that Town Hall is a business, and you are the customers, we are the taxpayers. It is our responsibility to serve you, the customers, as well as be financially responsible. There's no business that can run without having those two to look after. So, I will raise that bar if I'm elected in Town Hall. Just a brief history of who I am. My family owned Highway 9 Express, and I was responsible for a lot of things, but two things I was responsible for was collecting the money and paying the bills. See, when you have 500 people's lives in your hands, you have to be responsible, and I expect to do the same thing if being at Town Hall. This is your community, and we have to be responsible. You do not repair what you do not measure, so we have to set goals, we have to set targets, and we have to be accountable to you, the people. See, I believe we have to change the mentality from a, we have to be a yes and can town. Where there's a no, we find a yes, where there's a can't, we find a can. You see, you can solve everything, if the customer wants this, and you want this, we need to find this. So, we need to become a town where people love to live here, they want to do business here, we appreciate their business. I want to set out to be the most friendliest, cleanest, and most sought-after town in Alberta. So, you see, you care and I care, so I know we can make a difference. So, vote Colberg, October 16th, because I want to be your mayor, thank you.
Ryan, do those guys have more chairs right there? They don't. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight, we're going to move on to the council candidates. One thing that I'd like to just address everybody about while you're here tonight is we're all passionate about our town, and there are lots of opportunities for everyone in the room that wants to get involved. If you go on the town's website, I think there's at least six open board positions that are available for anyone in this room that wants to be involved. So, if you're feeling like you want to be more involved in your community, a simple way to do it is to get involved with the council, with one of the boards that currently is seeking people at the town. We're going to move on, as I said, to the candidates for council, and we're going to start with Kalon.
Hello, hello, I hope you all had a good day so far today. First, a little bit about me, I have lived in the valley for over 15 years, I am 25 years old. I currently sit on the Dyna Arts Board in town, as well as the Drumheller Community Learning Society Board. I have work experience as a cook and a farmer, and currently a business owner. One of the things people always ask me is, why do you want to be on Town Council? For me, it's very simple, I want to give back to the community, it's something I've always wanted to do. Whenever I see someone in need, I'm like, hey, I want to help out, or I'm a volunteer opportunity, I'm there. So, I just like giving back. One thing I'd like to see more of if I get on Town Council would be better communication between the town and the community. A lot of times, you don't realize what's going on at Town Hall. That's pretty much all I have to say right now, and I hope you guys just come out and vote on October 16th, thank you.
Next will be Tom Zariski.
Good evening, everyone. Not used to being so early on the program, with Zed, I'm usually right at the end. Anyways, my name is Tom Zariski, and I'm running for position of Drumheller Town Council. I have served on council for the last two terms. For those who don't know me, I lived and raised a family in Drumheller for almost 45 years now. Came to Drumheller as a young teacher, became principal of the high school, and I was responsible for the budget, the staffing, the organization, and 600 or 700 teenagers. I've been very active in the community, I've served on many boards and organizations over the years. Some of them prouder moments, I was co-founder of Drumheller Titans Football Program, served as president, president of the Royal Tyrrell Museum Cooperating Society, coached hockey, served as vice president of minor hockey, been on the board of directors of the golf course on a couple occasions, a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, the RCMP, for 20 years, sit on the board of directors of Newcastle Community Association, vice-chair of the Drumheller District Seniors Foundation, advisors of the Citizens Town Patrol, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I've seen Drumheller grow, and I've seen it decline. Not too much we can do about TRICAN leaving town, but we can strive to replace it. As a council, I've worked hard to ensure that the growth outsteps the declines. Tourism, of course, is a main growth industry in Drumheller, but it needs to be strategically managed. All of the attraction operators I spoke to over the last few weeks have remarked on a very good summer, especially August. We need now to extend that, we need tourists coming in the shoulder seasons. With the construction of the Asian Mall, for example, next across Iron Mills, there might be an opportunity to have buses of tourists come from there. Economic development, of course, is necessary to create the industries and businesses that will tax, take the tax burden off of home and business owners. I believe there is also an opportunity to have Drumheller become more of a retirement community. One of the main deterrents to this, however, is seniors housing. I'm vice-chair of the Drumheller and District Seniors Foundation. We manage the supportive living housing in the Drumheller Valley. Our community is aging, with this comes more need for more seniors housing of various types. Our supportive living seniors housing is based on a 30-year-old model, where seniors would live in their homes, as they age, they would leave their homes, move into a level-one facility such as the Manners. As they continue to require more assistance, they would progress through levels two and three. What is happening today is that people are being sustained in their homes for a longer period of time, and then when they absolutely have to leave their homes, they are skipping over our supportive living and ending right in level-four care. Unfortunately, there is no level-four care facility in the valley, so these people end up in the hospital. When the hospital's full, they get shipped out of town, which is absolutely incorrigible to think that some of these people who built this community and lived here all their lives are shipped out of town to spend the rest of their days. We need to reinvent the seniors foundation and really look at seniors housing and come up with a much better plan. These are some of the things I'd like to work on as councillor, thank you.
Can I just do a quick survey here, if you are under 35 years old, would you raise your hand, please? That's a low percentage. I know you're under 35. Next up is Lisa.
All right, good evening, fellow Drumhellerites. I'm very thankful to see so many engaged citizens out this evening. It's heartening to know how much we care about our home. For those of you who do not know me, I am Lisa Hanson-Zacharak, and I've been blessed to serve this community for seven years. It has been one of the biggest honors of my life. During my tenure, I put myself forward as a means on many platforms to raise funds for many community associations, as well as putting in countless volunteer hours. A couple of my perhaps not-so-favorites were a pie-to-my-face-for-DinoArts and a cool dunk tank for the BCF, but whatever the task, I am game if it makes our community a better place. I'm married to my high school sweethearts, and we have two beautiful daughters. I enjoy reading, horseback riding, and fossil hunting with my family. Growing up in this valley has been a blessing, from our opportunities to this amazing come-together-when-we-nneed-it community, that I am so proud to represent. I was a former small-business owner of 11 years, who operated in the heart of our downtown. Currently, I'm working on a new chapter in my life, and I've worked my way through the ranks in two short years to become an account executive for Western Financial Group. Every day, I work with small to large businesses across Alberta in the commercial insurance field. I always joke that there are two occupations most people dislike in this world, politicians and insurance brokers, and yes, I chose both. I am also the president of the Homestead Museum Society, director for the Royal Tyrrell Museum Cooperating Society, director in surrounding writing political organizations, and an elected member to the Insurance Institute of Southern Alberta. I'm often asked, when do I take a break for myself, but when you love what you do, why stop? Being proud to represent goes further than all that, though. Proud to me means getting something accomplished. When a citizen has a request, I go that extra mile to make sure it is taken care of. I am your voice on council. I've been asked about a platform, and my main focus is to continue to work on economic and community development, beautification, and good fiscal governance. This past council had a plan to build on our entrances, keep our debt servicing low, keep taxes in line, and I want to see that mission carried forward. I do want to keep working on providing necessary maintenance and infrastructure, like a fenced dog park, second sheet of ice, improve the ball diamonds, sidewalks in all communities, including the continuation of lobbying the province for safer intersections for pedestrians. We do still need to work harder at improving our green spaces, and an idea I floated last time around was a dedicated parks department. I've not given up on this. I want to continue to work with council on flood mitigation solutions, business retention incentives, and review of current policies as we do need to evolve with the times. Recycling programs have been brought forward to my attention over the last few months. We do need to look into being better environmental stewards, and at the same time, finding that financial balance that the community is willing to support. There will always be improvements needed, and new ideas brought forward to make this community better, and there is much work still to be done. I'm open to engaging and listening to all of you on positive ways to improve our home. We're entering a new era in Town Hall with a new CIO, exciting times of change that will be pivotal for the future. Please vote for me, October 16th, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, next up is Christine.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christine Demott, and I was born here in Drumheller in 1986. I am the daughter of Jeff and Kathy Demott, and granddaughter of Joe and Dolores Demott, who are lifetime locals here in Drumheller. My platform focuses on one major issue, and I believe this issue could be a very strong contributing factor to many of the other issues that have been brought up within our community. All over the world, small towns are losing their youth to larger cities indefinitely. It's a serious issue, and really is one of the larger reasons small towns seem to be vanishing. That being said, I believe one of the keys to the success of Drumheller is those under 40 years old, also known as the youth. We need to look at methods of attracting them here, or encouraging them to consider coming back home after obtaining their post-secondary education. Without the youth, who will bring new industry or fill our downtown businesses? Without the youth, who will occupy our empty homes or build new communities? Without the youth, who will provide for children for our schools or care for our elderly citizens? Like everywhere else in the world, without the youth, our community cannot go on. I have three methods that I believe can serve the dual purpose of benefiting the entire community and citizens, as well as attracting the youth to Drumheller. Method one, with fun and quality of life. How do we achieve this? Listening to our citizens and providing the things they suggest will increase their quality of life. What are some ideas? Create third spaces such as gathering places, microbreweries, off-leash dog parks. How does this help? By giving our community some unique flavor and culture. By giving our community some unique flavor and culture, our citizens are happy and more likely to recommend Drumheller to a friend or stranger. What are the other possible outcomes? A proud community takes care of their community. Method two: work in opportunities. How do we achieve this? Put Drumheller on the map for being a great place to start a business. What are some ideas? Simplifying the process of starting a new business, encouraging our citizens to learn about business by offering community courses and seminars, business incentives. How does this help? Being a small business positive community, we are giving more opportunities to our skilled citizens and giving younger citizens the ability to chase their dreams. What are the other possible outcomes? Our empty shops get filled and our downtown becomes vibrant. Sorry. Method three: industry via forward thinking. How do we achieve this? Looking around the world and taking note of the direction it's headed in via the digital revolution, green forward-thinking methods. What are some ideas? An impressive recycling program, attracting industries that downcycle garbage into new materials, looking at other methods of energy, looking at conserving water by encouraging zero-scaping. How does this help? If we show an interest in the future, we attract young professionals and other youth who are also thinking about the future. What are the other possible outcomes? Put us on the map for being the first small-town community to tap into this industry. Thank you.
There's no score in the game, so I still have some time to hang around. Next up is Elizabeth.
My name is Elizabeth Gallagher, and most of you know me as BJ. I was born in Drumheller and left when I was nineteen years old. Most of my family's data has returned to the valley, so over the years, I've always considered the valley home. My work experience is quite varied. First, I worked for Eugene Cush and Hannah, and then Derek Spitz in Edmonton. Both were lawyers. Then I stayed home and raised children for eight years, and later started a freelance business working for lawyers and a company in partnership with my sister Patty. We grew our business to over sixty-five law firms, large and small. I decided to retire after twenty-five years and passed on my business to two of my daughters. My third daughter is an RCMP sergeant in Fort McMurray. My two sons live in Vancouver. Then I traveled to the north to Rankin Inlet, where I became the executive director of the only Inuit friendship center in Canada. I had wonderful experiences there and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have gone, but I missed my family and it was really cold up there. I came back to Edmonton and sold real estate, then remarried and moved just south of Grassland. There, I eventually got a federal government contract to run the Service Canada Community Office in Lac Le Biche. After seven years there, my husband, my second husband, died, and I continued on there until 2012. At that point in time, the feds withdrew the contract that I was working on and all the other contracts of that kind. So I took a security course and was lucky enough to be hired as a commissioner here at the Drumheller Institution. My volunteer history is fairly, I have a lot of it. I'm a member of the Sir Optimus Club of Edmonton, have been for twenty-five years, have held all the positions, and been their casino chair for fifteen years. I was the secretary of the seniors drop-in center in Lac Le Biche, the chairman of the board of the daycare center and women's shelter in Rankin Inlet, the chair of the Sir Optimus Foundation of Canada for six and a half years, and I just finished that stint on September the 23rd. I have been the secretary of the Drumheller Library Board. I just finished a three-year term and hope to go back there. I'm the chair of the Drumheller Hospital Auxiliary and the vice president of the Alberta Healthcare Exileries Association. I just got home today from a three-day conference in Red Deer. My interests are painting, reading mysteries, traveling all over the world, mostly with Sir Optimists, and I love to spend time with my family. Thank you very much.
Next is Margaret.
I'm happy to see so many people here, and it shows me you're running for democracy, just as that is my passion, democracy. A little bit about me, I'm a retired teacher. I've taught in Canada and China, Middle East. So I bring, and I lived in Germany for three years. I bring a lot of knowledge of different systems and ways of living. It helps you be very adaptable and flexible. Now I'm involved in some tutoring and some volunteering in that. I've lived here, I chose this area, but I have lived in East Cooley for twenty years. And I said my passion was democracy, and it truly is. I believe in true representation and consultation, which makes people know that democracy works. To that, I have spent several years, probably from beginning 2009, attending council meetings here in Drumheller as an observer. And certainly opens your eyes to the amount of work that's required and the cooperation necessary. Anyway, that's my passion, democracy. And as far as the business of this, yes, I believe in encouraging business. Certainly, this is not only a tourist area. Tourism has its important part, but I really believe we need to put a lot of attention on small businesses and people who want to begin businesses. Tourists do not come to shop at Walmart and the large, large centers. They come because there are fascinating, intriguing shops. And that's what I would like to see encouraged, and we can enable those people by making it a positive experience for them to begin a business. And so I would like to say I'm hoping for your support on October 16th, and that's all I have to say.
There should be a bonus if they go under their three minutes, at least from my perspective. Next up is Alan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to go for the two minutes or less, so if you want to stand, that's fine with me. For those of you who don't know me, I've lived in Drumheller for over sixty years. I have approximately forty years of municipal experience. That's all been with the city of Drumheller, as well as the town of Drumheller. Started as a laborer back in 1976, and I worked my way up to November, middle of November 2016, and I retired as the director of infrastructure services. So now that I'm semi-retired, I do some relief operations and consulting services in the Edmonton area for several small communities, as well as some other environmental services companies. Over the years, I've been involved in many different types of activities with nonprofit groups, such as the Drumheller Swim Club, Ski Hill, Special Olympics Valley, VAS, Ag Society, football clubs, many, many, many more. I've been involved with the provincial organizations, such as the AWOA, for well over thirty years. I was past chair. I received the Ron Bane Award for long service. I've also worked with Nate as a Water and Wastewater Technician Program Advisory Committee. I also reviewed certification exams for the University of Sacramento. I also have no hidden agenda. I don't want the road in front of my house paved. I haven't promised so-and-so to fix his sidewalk. And no, I'm not mad at some former staff who I'm seeking revenge on. Just a quick note here on taxes. I know nobody really likes taxes, but I've been involved roughly forty years in the budgeting process. Thirty-seven of those years, our target was always zero increase budget. I mean, we never achieved it every time, but we worked hard to get that as administration and staff over the years. The other three years, Ralph Klein. So we went backwards for three years. That probably took us close to ten years to recover from. So if you're not moving forward, you're moving backwards. So in my point of view is, you need to spend funds to improve things and keep things moving forward in a positive manner. The only promise I'll make to you is that I'll work hard on your behalf, with whomever is on council, spending the funds responsibly in the most effective manner. Please vote for me on October 16th, as it would be an honor and a privilege for me to serve the citizens of Drumheller once more. Thank you.
I was asked to point out that there's actually early voting tomorrow here at the BCF between four and eight, so remember, if you're from Mexico, you don't need any ID to vote. That's an American joke, sorry. And next up is Peter.
Hello, good people of this valley. Thank you all for coming out this evening. We're here to try and figure out which seven people are the right ones to successfully transition this valley into the future, a future of prosperity, diversity, and make us more inclusive. We all face the downturn of the economy and its results. I have many ideas and experiences that can excite and interest people of this valley and also provide an added boom to the economy, along with that, an added benefit of new faces and ideas. It is with excitement and enthusiasm that I've thrown my hat in. I ask for your consideration in the next twelve days as candidate to vote for. I look forward to bringing ideas of more viable downtown that attracts businesses and encourages the townspeople, including youth and seniors, to be a part of the community, and ways to encourage our youth to have the same amount of pride and vested interest in this area, which would encourage them to stay rather than leaving. I have proudly made this area my home. Moving from Winnipeg five years ago, where I'm from, I've noticed that Alberta privilege can air a so-called indifference or even apathy with the abundance. Even with this difficult time, we could create more excitement and a sense of pride, ownership, and as I said earlier, a sense of wholeness to the valley. I've worked with many levels of government. I understand the importance of peaceful interactions, clear and concise information. I would like to work closely with other factions in the town to continue to provide a safe community where our children can grow and thrive. As an environmentally conscious contributor to this planet, I would heartily encourage continued growth in this area. There are always improvements to be made. I believe that the future's success depends on continued efforts at diversification. I'm a conscientious individual who believes in positive and peaceful interactions, is a successful completion of projects and ideas. I like to think of myself as a great motivator and a listener. In closing, I would like to thank all the candidates running and wish them all the best. We are fortunate to have many people that are willing to work together to make this valley whole. I know in my heart I can help to achieve this goal. Thank you.
Next up is Pat.
Good evening, and thank you to all who have taken time to consider your decision for the council for the next term. I also want to congratulate everyone on stage tonight. It's admirable that you've made a commitment to public office. I'm Patrick Kalafa, and I've served one term on Town Council, and in letting my name stand, I've taken time to reflect and take inventory. I looked at what I presented at the forum four years ago. Some may have been naive, some idealistic. I don't apologize for being idealistic. In fact, many of those ideals that I stood for then are intact. I still believe in community. I still believe that town of Drumheller, community groups, attractions, schools, volunteers, and residents working together builds prosperity. I still believe we must be bold and positive in moving our community forward. Now more than ever, I still believe that our people are our greatest resource. I believe that economic development needs a holistic approach that starts with the question, how do we make the valley an incredible place to work and live? I believe in my first term, these ideals have been reflected in some of the directions the council has moved. We've made strides in addressing beautification and downtown revitalization as a way to boost economic readiness and create spaces. We've re-engaged an economic development task force. We're learning to take advantage of opportunities for efficiencies and best practices as they relate to sustainability. This includes a robust asset management program. While support for major projects from other levels of government is fleeting, we have made real strides in adding to our recreational capacity with the addition of the skate park working with Days and two major aquaplex renovations. We've also worked to provide great services to individuals and families. I'm proud that this town's come up with a program to help subsidize families in need use our community facilities. I'm also proud that on Friday evenings, adults and children can go to the BCF for $2. I'm proud that I was on the library board and watched incredible staff come up with incredible programs for all. I'm proud of the Library Society for granting free library cards for residents for Canada's 150th. It's not to say that every battle's been a success or that the work's done. One thing that I've learned over the last four years, there's no magic wand, no simple fix, no perfect solution. But it doesn't mean that we shy away from an ambitious agenda. It's going to take careful evaluation of ideas, investigation, methodical implementation, small victories, small setbacks, adjustments, and then bigger victories. Thank you.
Next up is Dwayne.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I am Dwayne Nagy, and I'm running for council. First, thanks to the District Chamber of Commerce and the Alberta Teachers Association and the BCF for hosting tonight, and like some of my predecessors, the other candidates, because this really is what politics of Drumheller should look like. A bit of background, my wife and I and my two girls moved here in 2011, and after only a few weeks, we did realize this was going to be our forever home. And not to sound cliche, but Drumheller's been very good to us, and we would like to give back on a whole new level. A bit about me, I'm a lieutenant in the Canadian Armed Forces Health Services Unit. I have been serving for eleven years. I'm a practicing registered nurse. I sit on the provincial council for the College and Association of Registered Nurses. And as a nurse, I've worked in a variety of roles over the last fourteen years, some at very high levels with provincial medical affairs and more locally within hospital management. I've had tough jobs, and I know what it takes to make tough decisions in delicate situations. As for my background in the political landscape, well, I have no direct political affiliations, but I've been fortunate, and my employment positions have given me the opportunity to work with the ministers of health and their staff and office, and I've contributed to work that has changed the Health Professions Act for our province. And that has given me vast experience in working with internal and external stakeholders, exactly what I believe a council member should have. And it's also given me a balanced and level-headed approach to decision-making, especially in rapidly changing situations. But what I think some of you are here to find out is really what is it that I support? And I've had a chance to hear from our communities at the local coffee shops and at the community events, at the hospital, and yes, even in your homes, and I thank you for that. And I think there is alignment in our beliefs. I think we all share a strong sense around the need for fiscal responsibility. So what are the priorities? Well, I've heard you say, control some spending, improve- Well, I've heard you say control some spending, improve some of the efficiencies around our existing services, and help build our economy. I support those things. I support the economic development, but only if it's done right and under a fair system of taxation. And we also need to support sensible development and the protection of services. And we can achieve that through purposeful planning related to infrastructure, housing, and services. And we, as a council, need to remember our community's enduring commitment to protect the social determinants, and we need to ensure that Drumheller is accessible for everyone. We need to invest and protect our parks and our playgrounds and other spaces where people can gather to enjoy Drumheller. And we need to sell ourselves to the rest of this province and the world. I'm Dwayne Nagy. Thank you very much.
For those of you that keep texting me from the back row, I got the message. No more jokes. Next up is Jay Garber.
Good evening, everyone. They said we could do whatever format we wanted, so I'll be doing an interpretive dance. But seriously, I'm running again because I believe I've proved myself to be a strong and sensible voice on council, and there's still lots of important work to do. The opportunities and threats that we face will require engaged experience and integrity, and through my two terms of service, I hope that I've demonstrated that I'm up to the challenge. I started out differently than some of the people here asking for your support, because I learned leadership through more than a decade of volunteer service before I ever sought a community leadership role as important as this one. I learned valuable lessons and honed important skills like consensus building, accountability, and putting ideas into words under pressure through my service to Drumheller Rotary, Public Library Board, Victim Services, the Olympic Torch Relay, Steering Committee for this VCF, just to name a few. Those leadership roles were excellent training and built a solid foundation for serving on council. This past term has been extremely challenging. It began on the heels of the 2013 flood. 14 months later, the oil recession began, then the NDP government was elected, and for the second time, this constituency elected an MLA who is sitting in opposition to the government. That all adds up to be a really tough time to pry money out of the hands of the federal and provincial government, but still, some good things have happened. Here's just a few of the things I'm proud of from 2016, 2017, let alone the past term. A 0% tax increase for 2017. Arts and culture policy and funding, the fee assistance program whose aim is to make sure Drumheller is for everyone, aquaplex modernization is almost complete, and succession planning, and that's one that deserves some detail. I've been determined to address succession planning at the highest levels of our administration, and I've been influential in making change happen, the culmination of which was the transitioning out of our CAO after 30-plus years of service, for which he's earned our thanks, but a change was past due. Many have tried, but we've succeeded. Moving forward, if I'm elected, I'd like to keep these areas of focus and implement new priorities like business investment and attraction, creating a truly business-friendly culture at Town Hall, doing something bold with the Rosedale Industrial Park, incentivize expense reduction through our own town staff, continue fighting for flood mitigation, learn about implementing solar power from Starland County, who's been an innovator just up the road, and marketing Drumheller as a retirement community of choice for seniors leaving the cities, and finally getting real about local poverty reduction strategies. You've been able to count on me to be prepared and to lean in and be engaged with the often really unexciting work that councils have to do, and I've established a reputation as someone who will ask the tough questions on your behalf. I'm ready for the changes that are coming, and I hope that you'll give me your support again on October 16th. Thank you.
Next is Fred.
Evening, residents of Drumheller. I'm Fred McWhiggy. Been a resident here for 40 years. My bio's on the back of this, so I'm not going to concentrate on that. As a candidate for Drumheller Council, my goal is to illustrate that what "Believe in Better" can be for residents. Drumheller holds a lot of unrealized potential of its tourist destination, as well as a place to start or carry on business or raise a family. It is important to understand that many of the expenses incurred by town are fixed costs that are equally distributed among all taxpayers. The burden of taxation for such things as road maintenance, garbage collection, operation of water treatment facility, to name a few, are shared equally between the tax-paying residents and the businesses that call Drumheller home. Ladies and gentlemen, that shared burden is more than palatable when the unemployment is low and opportunities prevailing. Time and again, residents comment that the Town Hall is not facilitating an environment that is friendly to business. New businesses create new taxation revenue sources, not only from the employer but from the employees who contribute to the tax base necessary to cover fixed costs, as well as operating expenses of the town. Drumheller's future depends on a stable revenue base that starts with honing a business-friendly environment. Together, the citizens of Drumheller and our council need to create an environment that allows residents to decide how their community moves forward. And to that end, more comprehensive and open communication policy with council will assist in reaching that goal. Together, we can collectively make Drumheller a stronger, more resilient community. Bringing common sense back to council starts by working collaboratively with residents to address their needs and by working at different levels of government while maintaining council's autonomy. Council carries the responsibility of planning for Drumheller's future by basing decisions on what is right for Drumheller residents beyond council's four-year term in office. As a private business owner, I feel taxpayers should be treated more like customers and who deserve rightfully to expect a desired outcome. This creates an environment that's more in tune with the needs of the residents. The prioritization of projects that involve a proper needs assessment that recognizes a town's needs over its wants is critical to properly deciding what projects need to come first and what projects can wait. This will ensure that the town infrastructure is fixed, maintained, to avoid unexpected and expensive patchwork repairs that create additional financial burden to taxpayers. Open and consistent communication policy should be employed to better inform Drumheller ratepayers and allow residents to give their input that will help guide the council's decisions on the vision that you have for the future of Drumheller. Ladies and gentlemen, I humbly ask you to consider me for Town Council and share my vision of Believe in Better.
If people have questions that they want to be submitting, if you could raise your hand, we could grab any of those before the break. There's one over there, Marley. Right here as well, please. Next up is Greg.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Greg Bolton. I'm running for Town Council. Thank you all for coming out tonight for the forum. Also like to thank the Drumheller Chamber of Commerce for organizing tonight's event. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in Calgary, graduated from Western County High School in '81, and went to Montreal College. Moved to Drumheller in 2004 with the help of working with Highway 9 Express, as I had worked in their Calgary office and was able to transfer to Drumheller. Been married to Shelley since 2010, and have a daughter Kimberly and a stepson Michael. My business background is mostly from the transportation industry, where I started as a driver way back in '85 to various dispatch and management positions. Is also part-owner of a small restaurant in Calgary from '98 to 2000. My platform is basically three areas that I think I can help in. Being accessible to all and to be a new voice for the people of Drumheller, work with existing businesses and help them thrive in today's economy, and to attract new businesses to the valley, and to help promote or revitalize the revitalization of the downtown core. To me, being accessible means to listen to everyone and to take their concerns, ideas to council. To help get Drumheller back working is going to take more than six councils and one mayor. It will take the whole town to work together. To help businesses thrive in Drumheller, we need to promote supporting local, buying the town should take the lead here and buy all that they can possibly from the local businesses. To attract new businesses, we need to be able to show prospective businesses we have a smart growth strategy. If we can build things simply as new walking paths, bike paths, add more parks, even saw on drum discussion back a couple days ago, a need for a dog park. I don't have a dog, but I know people that do, and I know they would support it. We could use, you know, percentage of licensing fees to build this. It would take something as simple as the walking path or the dog park that makes someone want to move to Drumheller and start their businesses. In closing, I'd just like to say that I promise I can, the only promise I can make is that I'll work hard and I will find answers to any questions I'm asked. The town needs new leadership, and I truly hope we get a large turnout on October 16th to show the people who get voted in, hope I'm one of them, that they are being held accountable for every yes and no they vote on in chamber. And thanks to everyone for coming out this evening.
Who's messing with my lights? Here comes someone to the rescue. I believe there's also an early poll next Saturday as well, so tomorrow, next Saturday as well, both of those are at the VCF. Everybody see me now? Next up is Tara.
Good evening and welcome. For those of you who may not know me, my name's Tara McMullin. I've called Drumheller home for the past 21 years. I'm a current Town Counselor, a wife, and a mother of three grown children. I believe I can continue to make a difference in our community. My platform has not changed since the last election. I will continue to listen and be a voice for all citizens of Drumheller. I have been an active advocate for the residents in our community. I will continue to encourage sustainable growth and development. The policies' frameworks are in place, and now we need to oversee the implementation of these action plans and to keep taxes to a minimum. I believe that we can continue to be fiscally responsible while enhancing the services that we provide. I always have believed that making a difference in our community is by volunteering. I currently service chairperson for Junior Achievement, the Drumheller Learning Society, the Valley Bus Society, I'm a volunteer with the CIBC Run for the Cure, and an active leader with the Girl Guides of Canada. I enjoy working with youth in our community, as they are our future. They need to feel that there is a future for them to stay here, live, and raise their own families. I was a small business owner for 10 years, so I have a clear understanding of the challenges that small businesses face in our current economic times. This is a struggle that all municipalities are facing, not just Drumheller. As a community, we need to work together to support our local businesses. We need to look at when new industries and businesses are a fit for our community. Do we have the employees to fill these positions? Do we need to look at education for these employment opportunities? How do we engage with our existing businesses to make sure they continue to be successful? There are times on council when decisions are made that not everyone will agree with. It's a hard balancing act at times. We need to continue to improve and replace our infrastructure, grow our community while providing the services and amenities that the residents need and desire in our community. Elections are always an exciting times in communities as changes in the air. Opinions are expressed, both positive and negative. No matter who is elected, there will be change. For the first time in 30-plus years, the town of Drumheller will have a new CAO. We have the opportunity to change the culture of our community. By the culture of our community, I am referring to the "we versus them" attitude that has been evident in our community for many years. Council needs to work together. Once elected, there is no official opposition in municipal politics. We need to be a team that communicates openly with each other, the CAO, and the residents. We should make Drumheller the employer choice in our community. Thank you.
Just to remind everyone, there's two more speakers, and then we're going to take a short, very short break, and then we'll return to the questions. Next up is John Graham.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Thank you to everybody, the Chamber of Commerce and the Teachers Association for putting on this forum. My name is John Graham. I went by my middle name Barry while my father was alive. His name was John also. I was born and raised in Drumheller, and my family has actually lived in Drumheller for over 100 years. I actually had no intention of ever running for politics or becoming a politician, and we all know the jokes about politicians. Like my dear old dad used to say, "You're damned if you do and damned if you don't. It's a thankless job, and it's a no-win situation." I grew up watching all the beautiful old buildings get tore down and the coal mines get tore down. My uncle and my dad used to always say, "Never be ashamed of being a working man." I missed a meeting in East Cooley where they determined what was going to happen with the old East Cooley School. My friend Barry Edwards phoned me and said, "Barry, they're going to tear it down." I went and met with the then-president of the Community Association, Mr. Bob Rebus, and Mr. Norman Eagleback, the councillor for ID number seven. They were very enthusiastic about saving the structure, and they said, "If I could find a grant, they would support me." I opened up the Calgary Herald, and lo and behold, there was a grant, an employment grant, the first of approximately $450,000 that we accessed to save the East Cooley School and the Atlas Coal Mine. I've been in so many meetings where everybody talks about, "We should do this, and we should do that," like a wise old politician told me, "They, they, they should do that." Well, who is "they"? They are "we." If we want something done, we have to do it ourselves. That's how I got involved, through necessity. And because I did get involved, we have the East Cooley School Museum, we have the Atlas Coal Mine National Historic Site, we have a sewer system in East Cooley, we have the Dinosaur Valley Heritage Society, and many other projects that I initiated. Our own Main Street program that saw the Last Chance Hotel in Wayne restored the exterior to its original, the two garages in East Cooley, and the two churches. If we want something done, we have to get up and do it. I served two terms on Improvement District of Badlands Number Seven Council. My last year, I was actually the provincial president of all the improvement districts of Alberta, and I served one other year on the executive. I would ask for your vote for council. I can promise that I will get things done, and that's what I believe in. Enough talking, let's get things happening. Thank you very much.
Next up is Tony. Len DeBrack is not feeling well tonight. He must still be, must be an Oilers fan, or that we now have Jagger, so he will not be speaking tonight. So Tony's going to speak, and then we're going to have a very brief break, and then we'll go into the question period. Any more questions out there that we need to gather up? Anywhere, anywhere, anywhere? None? Thanks, hon.
Evening, fellow citizens of Drumheller. My name is Tony Locker, and I've been a resident of Drumheller for the past 21 years. I relocated here with my family in 1996 as a new branch manager of ATB Financial, where I worked up until 2010. At that point, I was asked to be a district general manager of 13 branches in southeast Alberta. Albeit, my new office was in Lethbridge, I chose to commute the distance versus having to leave this beautiful valley. My three children were raised primarily in Drumheller, and all of them graduated from either DBHS or St. Anthony's. They have all since moved on to begin successful careers of their own, while my wife Linda and I have chosen this town in which to retire. Throughout the 21 years that my family has lived here, we've always been involved in the community, whether it be in sports, nonprofit organizations, special events, or fundraising campaigns. I personally have been a longstanding member of both the Knights of Columbus and the current president of the Lions Club Service Groups. I've served on various chamber and town boards across the provinces and communities where my career with ATB has taken us. In Drumheller, I sat on the Solid Waste Recycling Committee and was the past chairman of the Badlands Community Facility Steering Committee, which was instrumental in bringing a grassroots idea to this, a reality. Hence, my platform is simple. I want my community to be progressive and vibrant place that continues to attract families and businesses. It needs to be a town that takes pride in its communities and is open to a diverse range of... It needs to be a town that takes pride in its communities and is open to a diverse range of industry. I believe that everything starts as a vision and with the right players at the table, these visions become realities. I also believe that my 35-year career with ATB Financial has provided me with some acquired strengths that I can bring to that table. Some of those include an extensive financial background in accounting and finance, an analytical skill set, strong leadership management skills, the ability to manage people effectively, experienced communicating openly and honestly, proven fiscal responsibility, established credibility and accountability. So I stand here before you with no hidden agendas, no lofty campaign promises. I do however, stand here before you as a passionate citizen of Drumheller who loves this town for what it is and what it can become. I believe that if you choose me as an enabler, I will become part of a councillor team whose mission will be to move us forward. Our success will showcase Drumheller as a town that is vibrant and open for business, as well as a place where everyone is welcome to settle and raise a family as I did. I'm ready to serve and willing to work hard to make this happen. All I need now is your vote on October 16th, along with your support and feedback over the next four years. Thank you.
It's now 7:34. We are going to take a 15-minute break. Again, if you have any questions you want submitted, this is the location. We will commence again in 15 minutes sharp. Thank you. Yes, and then of course, the winner was not help. Yes. Have fun. Have a fast break.
Oh, yes. That's the top man in the department with this bill. There's a lot of bankers in here, remember? Yeah. So be careful with the red line. All right. Before we go, yeah. Not tonight. I've seen the mayor's office. He's just been asleep. That was probably during the night. Yeah. Is this like, how many people do you have?
Thirty-second warning.
We'll sit down there. They give me spots, but I can't wait to help. It's not proper.
All right, is everybody ready? It's those of you in the back who closed the doors for me, please, and thank you. We'll get the next part going so I can go home and watch the orders. Exciting news from Eastern Canada, the Leafs are up 10-0 today. Before I start the question-and-answer period, again, my name is Brock Harrington. I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like everyone to just close your eyes for a sec and envision this conversation if we were in Oi Inn tonight, because they would be saying, "I wish I had a museum that brought 500,000 people to our town." And I know sometimes it's a contentious issue as where Drumheller is a... Thank you. Sometimes it is a contentious issue as whether Drumheller is a tourist town, but again, probably 99% of the towns in Alberta would love to be in our position. And what our challenge is collectively is how we can all prosper and suffer from the tourists pulling RVs through downtown on one-way streets and parking where they shouldn't. So, as the president of the Chamber of Commerce, I would like to say we are a tourist town, whether we like it or not, and we need to just embrace it and figure out how we can prosper collectively and still have parking spots downtown. Again, I just want to go over the format for the next part. We've broken the candidates up into several groups. I am going to ask a specific question to Group A. Group B will not get the same question. At the end of the evening, all the candidates will be given all the questions that I'm going to be asking, and they can choose... They can answer the ones that they aren't asked in whichever format they like. So, the groupings. Heather Colberg and Cheryl Schaaf are Group One, because they're running for mayor. I was reminded I did not pronounce last names earlier, so I'm going to go... I will cover that now. Group Two is Christine Demont, Elizabeth Gallagher, Jay Garbutt, Lisa Hanson-Zacharak, Tony Locker, Greg Polson. Group Three is John Graham, Patrick Kalafa, Fred McWecky, Tara McMillan, Peter Rhodes. And Group Four is Margaret English, Alan Kendrick, Dwayne Nagy, Kalon Sykes, and Tom Zariski. I have 12 questions. The first question I'm going to be asking, and the candidates, please, use the mic in front of you, but you don't need to come up here, this is my podium now. So I'm going to ask... And I'm going to ask this question to both Heather and Cheryl. Heather, you could respond first, please. I did not write these, just read. "Many citizens have talked tonight and recently about the fact that we need to attract more businesses to Drumheller. It's a great idea. How are we going to attract new businesses?" I understand that they only have one minute, so you will have to be concise. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I believe we have to really develop a strong economic development board, and we have to go ask. We need to look for factories, manufacturers, businesses. In fact, I've even made a call to Amazon and an email and got a call back saying we're not big enough. I'm prepared to go to whatever lengths, because we need to fill these buildings. If we don't, how are we going to fill the homes? So it's going to be a high priority. I don't care what we have to do as council, the administration, everybody's going to be involved to find ways. If we have to go out asking, knocking on doors, setting up meetings, I really... I will do whatever, because I want to see this town prosper, and I love this valley. So thanks for the question.
Cheryl?
Thank you very much. How would we attract businesses to Drumheller? Well, first of all, as the mayor, I would be out there, contacting my friends and people I know in Calgary, people that I know have the money to come to Drumheller. But first of all, we as a town have to make an incentive for them to come here. We have to let them know we're open for business. We have to make sure that we have done all the things we can possibly do to have them come here. Exactly some type of standards, we have to work on it ourselves. And I would like to see the new... Right now, we have a half-time economic development person. I would like to see a full-time person that works strictly for the town to go out. Thank you.
The next question, we'll go to Group Two. We'll start with Christine. And this is not my question, but it is something I was passionate about. I believe I first visited Drumheller in 1995 and was able to ski on the ski hill. This question is about, "Will Drumheller get their ski hill back?" Any actions, updates, anything you can share, any thoughts on the ski hill? First, please, Christine Demont.
Hello, everyone. Well, I'm not sure whether we can do anything about the ski hill, of course. I haven't sat on council before, but I actually really enjoyed the ski hill here in Drumheller as a kid. I learned how to ski. I broke my arm. It was awesome. So, I personally, I would love to see that brought back, myself. I have a lot of great memories there, so I'll do what I can to get those answers. Thank you.
Next would be Elizabeth Gallagher.
I think that it would be very nice to get it back, but at this point, I would think probably not. If they had left the equipment where it was, it might have been able... They might have been able to put it back together and get it going. But I would think that the cost would be absolutely horrendous right now to try and start all over again. It's a shame.
Next, same question to Jay Garbutt.
Didn't expect this one. This one's back from 2010. We got hit in the face with this out of the blue in the very first year of our first term, those of us who were elected. Pardon? Oh. I am standing. And it was very disappointing, because, you know, I have one speed, it's blunt as a stone. A flim-flam man came to town, convinced that board of things that were lies. He was a proven liar, but he still managed to convince that organization that he could run it for them. Instead, he ran it into the ground. Unfortunately, your council of the day got to wear it, as though somehow we bankrupted them, which is certainly nothing, nothing, even approximating the truth. At this particular point, given that the... You know, I agree, that if the ski lift was still there and certifiable, then it's possibly something that could happen. At this particular time, though, given that the ski lift is gone, we're talking about a multimillion-dollar investment that would have to be either profit or not-for-profit, and I just can't imagine that someone's willing to invest that in that location at this time. I'm sorry, but things do change.
Lisa Hanson-Zacharak, same question, please.
My husband spent many seasons working at that ski hill, and I know there was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears I went into from this community fundraising to keep that hill viable and alive. But, as Jay had said, there's no foreseeable thought of that occurring in the next probably 10, 15, 20 years, until we actually get a community group together that's willing to fundraise, or a private business that's willing to put that money into that location. But on the other hand, they also have a property lease with the Passion Place, so that organization would have to be at the table in order for that to occur. So, at this time, no. Thanks.
Same question to Tony.
As I said earlier, anything is possible with a vision. I understand from the history, being that it was running when I got here, that thing got off the ground with a handful of people from the community who made that thing happen. If that was ever going to happen again, it would have to be collectively done like that. However, I'm not sure how long it's progressed there. I mean, the equipment's long gone, and the land has been leased, but that's where community comes in and builds or brings things like that into realities, no different than how this place here was built, and that started with a grassroots movement as well. Thank you.
Lastly, same question to Greg Polson.
It might not be a scale that we could use it for, but we could use it in the summer for summer events. We could do X... I'm not sure if extreme bikes, whatever they call it, and things like that, and do things in the winter in conjunction with the Passion Place site for, you know, Christmas events, bonfires, you know. Doesn't have to be totally expensive. We can use that area year-round instead of... You know, scales are expensive, and, you know, the scale's close to your... Close enough, people get to you in the day, so we can use that hill year-round. Thanks.
The next question has to do with a safe community. With the downturn in the economy and the rising crime, what is the best plan to keep Drumheller a safe community to raise a family? And I'd start, please, with John Graham. This is Group Three. John Graham, Patrick, Fred, Tara, and Peter.
Hello, John Graham. To keep our community safe... Well, I think we're probably a pretty safe community now. We do have some wonderful RCMP officers in Drumheller, and we've got the Neighborhood Watch, and a pretty good, close-knit group of citizens in town. I think, as all communities, there's probably a drug problem in Drumheller, and I think that, if you listen to the news, is one of the major problems. To probably combat that, if we had maybe some more recreational facilities for our youth, we might be able to get the youth off the streets, if you will, and get them, you know, busy with other things. So I think that's crucial. If we're going to keep the youth off the streets and safe, we should have more recreational facilities. Thank you.
Same question to Patrick Kalafa.
Thank you. In dealing with crime and such things, the best thing we can do is get to know each other. It's a well-known thing that when you know your neighbors, you look out for your neighbors. And there are ways that we can do that. Those communities made strides through asset development programs, building relationships with the RCMP through the Duke of Edinburgh, things like that. Youth programs, absolutely. I don't want to ever just say that, you know, the problem is youth. But when there are things to do, and when you do know each other, and when you care for each other, you make a better community.
Same question to Fred McWecky.
That kind of stole my thunder. Being on the police committee, I've seen both sides, and I know the solution isn't more police, because if you stand in front of your window and look out for 24 hours, watching for the police to go by, they'll go by when you've been in the bathroom. Guaranteed. In 2005, the provincial government put out a pamphlet, talking about safe communities, and they talked just about what Pat was talking about, knowing your neighbor. And it goes back two generations, three generations, when you knew who belonged in your neighborhood, who belonged in your backyard, when the newspapers were on your neighbor's step, you took them so that the grass was mown, their street was done. We need to get back to our sense of a community and know who lives next door, who belongs, whose kids are whose, and who doesn't belong driving down the back alley or sits in front of houses idling. I think that's a solution. We've tried it in our community, and the neighborhoods, we implemented it. It actually improved the security in that neighborhood. I would carry that on as a program.
Same question to Tara McMillan.
I'll concur with Fred and Pat on that, the sense of community. We do have a very strong RCMP presence in our community. We have citizens on patrol, but they can't be everywhere all the time. We need to watch out for our neighbors, our neighborhood children that are out in the streets playing. We need to know who belongs, who doesn't belong, and move forward with that whole sense of responsibility as a whole. Everything is everybody's problem, not just somebody's problem.
And lastly, the same question for Peter Rhodes.
Thank you. I wanted this question. I find that our valley is very divided. We need to come together. We need to have something downtown. We need something for the seniors and the youth and everybody in the valley to go to. In Winnipeg, we helped fix things called outreach centers. And what it does is it brings everybody in the community together. In these outreach centers, you have musical instruments and pool tables, resource information, seminars, mentorship programs, all sorts of things like that. Everybody together downtown, and that helps with the downtown becoming more vibrant. We could have stages, like mobile stages, that we could use all in the valley. We could use them. Thank you, Peter.
The next question has to do with public consultation. And the question is, "When should council engage the public regarding projects that will affect the public?" I'd like to start, please, with Margaret English. Yeah, that's Margaret English, Alan Kendrick, Dwayne, Kalon, and Tom. So Margaret English, please.
Thank you. Public consultation is... Has to be done before. The problem we've had with consultation, the word consultation, people think it means... What I've seen in examples is that we get told what the decision is, what the decision on a certain policy or program is, after it's already been decided. That isn't consultation. Consultation has to... You have to have input, and there's discussion and feedback at the end of it. So we have to make sure that the consultation happens before a policy or issue is decided. And I'm not talking about small things that don't make a difference in our lives. I'm talking about the big things that make a lot of difference. If it changes our communities, if it increases our taxes, it harms our health or our citizens. We don't throw away people on a policy. You consult first to make sure all of those bases are covered. Thank you.
Same question to Alan Kendrick.
Thanks, Brock. I think if you want to create some excitement, all you have to do is change the parking downtown. You can certainly have enough public open houses. The other thing is, if you go to change the garbage bin, obviously, we had four or five open houses. Sometimes they're disappointing when you get 18 people in these coolies that show up, and downtown Drumheller proper, you would get three. And one was there for other reasons than the actual open house. So I think, for the most part, people need to attend the open house when they're announced. They're done in two or three locations, so I think council does a reasonable job, or has in the past, to try and have open houses as much as possible. It's on the internet, it's usually available. I've done surveys, walking through the seniors' center in regard to Valley Bus, all of those things. They do their best to inform people before those types of decisions are made.
Same question to Dwayne Nagy.
Hello? With respect to public consultation, I believe in it. I believe that any time that we have issues that will have a significant impact on the people of Drumheller, I do believe we need public consultation, but not just in a single form. I think we need to move with the times. We also need to ensure that we use a variety of avenues for the public to engage with council and for council to engage back. An informed public will help us make informed decisions. Thank you.
Same question to Kalon Sykes.
As far as public consultation goes, I think that they should be consulted right away, before we even start making any time plans. Go ask them what they want, before we start writing anything down in the books. Whenever someone asks me, "Hey, what do you think about this?" I'm there, I want to give my opinion. I just hope everyone else does, too.
And lastly, same question to Mr. Tom Zariski.
Yeah. Public consultation, I think, takes two forms, that of formal consultation and informal. Formal consultation, obviously, the bigger the project, the more you have to have formal public consultation, where you have people together in a room like this on a big project that'll affect your taxes. For me, public consultation takes place in Friesen, takes place in Walmart, takes place in the Wayne Community Hall, takes place on the third hole of the golf course. I'm talking to people all the time about many, many different things, and that, to me, is the informal public consultation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The next question will be directed towards Heather Colberg and Cheryl Schaaf. And this is a bit of a contentious issue, it's not my issue. Water and sewer rates, it's certainly been a buzz. So, it's not so... Let me try to formulate this into a question. It says sewer rates are 80% of the water rates. Why are we charged at this rate in the summer when everyone is growing grass to make their house look good? So I'll start first with Heather.
Wow, good question. Ironically, I was just speaking to my brother this afternoon about this, because he lives in a different community, and theirs are split up. So I said, "Get me that bill, and I want to do some research." But I have done some research with some past councilors, and there was at a time that there was ability to give water in the summer to help make the lawns green. So we need to dig that information out, because I'm with you. If we expect the community to be beautiful, strong, growing, and green, how can we expect people to pay these $200, $300 water bills? I mean, I put some new sod in my yard this year, and so I had to water it, and yes, I had those atrocious bills, and I don't think it's fair to any of us. Do I have all the answers? Absolutely not. Am I prepared to look for them? You bet. Because if other councils have done this and allowed it to happen, we need to find out what they did and make that work. Thanks a lot.
Water is a very contentious issue. First of all, we did used to give, as a council, to the taxpayers, "Increase your water in the summer." That was because... to the taxpayers, increase your water in the summer. That was because the water rates were paid through your taxes, your, what you did and your taxes. The provincial government came along and said, water has to be cost-recovered, which they mean is revenue equals expenses, right? So and the expenses for water is, you know, your transmission, your distribution, et cetera, chemicals, all that, and the payroll, whatever is in the expenses. So right now, what happens is, the town council looks and they see how much they can charge for water. Do we need to charge more all the time? Probably not. Can we look at it? Yes, we can. Is it feasible to give you water more in the summer? Probably not. I think we need to change our way of thinking. As I have saying all along, you need change, you need to look at zero scapeing. We need to do it as a town. And secondly, the water itself, we...
Yes, thank you, Cheryl.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
The next question has to do with our favorite topic, taxation. And this is going to go to group number two. And the question is, are you prepared to raise taxes to see that the work needed to maintain our services and revitalize our community? First up, Christine Demont.
First up. Well, I believe that if I am elected, one of the things I personally will do and want to do is have a look at the books, really get a good grip on what's going on, where there's areas that we can cut, see if there's like some of that shaving that we can do so that we don't necessarily have to raise everyone's taxes. But, you know, it comes down to the numbers, and unfortunately, I have no clue what the numbers are at yet, but I'm sure to find out.
Thank you. Same. No, I thought it was Jaeger scoring. It wasn't. Same question to Elizabeth Gallagher.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, raising the taxes may work, but it depends on where the work is being done. We're all paying taxes through this valley, and it seems that most of the work gets done in the center of town. And I think that you have to start considering the outlying areas and start taking their needs into consideration as well. Thank you.
Same question to Jay Garby.
Thank you. I think we should start each and every budget deliberation with a view to holding the line. That's how we should start every year. But would I raise your taxes? I'm to. It was imperative to invest in our infrastructure that we know has been crumbling with neglect through federal and provincial offloading, where they have not been paying their fair share of. You know, only 8% of the taxes collected in Canada wind up coming back to municipalities. Department, the fire services, to a swimming pool, to roads, you name it. And so if that, if we had to do it, remember, $4 million of our $8 million that we asked for in property taxes goes to salaries, and that doesn't even include benefits and pensions yet. And so whenever we're looking at that sort of thing, if it came from the community to say, we want you to hold the line, we've got to keep that. We have unions who have mandated cost of living increases on an annual basis. And so I each ask each and every one of you, what shall we stop doing?
Thank you, Jay. And Lisa Hansen-Zachrak.
So I guess the main thing is, what is a community prepared to support? $88,000 equals 1% of an increase on your land taxes. $88,000 isn't going to go very far. So I mean, depending on the scope of the projects, you would see a drastic, you could possibly see a drastic increase on your land taxes. So A, either you borrow or you increase taxes. That's up to the community, and I think those discussions will be important going forward. But at this moment, it's not my decision to make, it's yours.
Same question for Tony Locker.
Taxation. I guess we can do lots with more. Challenge is to do the same, withholding at the same. I spent 35 years of my career doing a lot of that. Sometimes you need to get creative. Sometimes you need to be responsible. Sometimes you just need to work it through. I haven't seen the operating budget, but I'm a numbers guy, and I'll probably take it to bed, read it front to cover. That's all I can say for now.
Same question to Greg Poulson.
This is a good question, as we just moved in the past year and a bit, and from one side of the river to the next, we, our taxes went up $450. And I've asked why, and I haven't really got an answer. Same as all the time, you don't get answers. We need to hold the line. We have to think outside the box if we're going to come up with new money and new ways to spend the money. And again, it comes to you guys, talking to whoever gets elected, to give us ideas on cuts and where to spend. Thanks.
The next question is on an election format, and I'm going to reverse the order that I have been asking people questions, so that the same person doesn't always go first. So the question to group three is, do you support a ward system for election of council? And I'd like to start with Peter Rhodes, please.
I don't really know anything about that thing, but I will look into it and get back to everybody. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not first on that right now.
Same question to Tara McMillan.
Thank you. I know we had the ward system in the past, and it's definitely something that could be looked at in the future. Problem with the ward system that came up last time is in some areas, we would have nobody running for council, or one person who was getting in by acclamation. And that's not a true democratic process in our community. So we would need to have a whole lot of people stepping up to the plate to run for those spots in those wards, to make sure we had quality people making quality decisions for the public.
Same question to Fred McAlwacki, please.
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, because I lost in 2004 to John Spirling by seven votes in the ward. I think in principle, the ward system is good, but I think that we're modern people here right now. We're conscientious. I'm proud of this valley from one end to the other end. My home is one end to the other end, and I'm not going to treat any particular part of town more importantly than the other. I'm going to go out of my way to consult. I'm going to, I would like to go tell the council to start having meetings in other parts of town, other than council chambers or at least consultation meetings. So that's the direction I'm going in. I intend to, I intend to see all of you. I hope, if I get into council, wherever it is you live.
Same question to Patrick Kalaka.
Yes, we did have a ward system in Tara's, right, that there were issues with acclamations, and not as many people coming out for it. We did have a plebiscite, and it was something about, I think, 1,800 to 800 in favor of scrapping it. So if we were to bring something back like that in, ultimately, it'd be up to you. I believe that we'd have to go to a plebiscite again. So if people were supportive of it, we could go to that, but the plebiscite, it's less than 20 years ago. So I don't recall the exact year of the, when they did that. So ultimately, it is up to you, but I think it's been settled. Thank you.
Same question for John Graham.
Hello, my name is John Graham. I served two terms on ID number seven, Badlands, and I was very involved when the idea of Badlands joined the town of Drumheller. The idea of Badlands had a $3.6 million surplus. The town of Drumheller had a $5.5 million deficit loans. We wanted a ward system to ensure that the smaller communities in the valley had representation. We've got a water system and a water filling station in East Cooley that nobody wanted, and it's greeting the people as you roll into town. So I do believe in a ward system. Possibly one counselor from the east, one from the west, and four from the town. If people get in by acclamation, that happens in other communities. If there's no one that runs in that ward, then there could be one from the central part of town. So I would revisit that issue. Thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, some of the people had specific questions that they want to pose to certain groups, but just the way things are rolling, that's not going to happen. The next question has to do with curling rink. And I'll try to make this succinct. It says, how does the curling rink, after paying over $16,000 per year for ice, $8,000 per year for heat, $5,000 and other associated costs, how does a facility that's essentially, I think if I read this right, 70 years old, fit into the longer-term planning of our community? And I'm going to start with Mr. Zariski.
What a lot of people don't realize is that recreation in Drumheller is expensive, that the swimming pool aqua complex costs you, the taxpayer, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, that the arena costs you hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, that this place costs hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. The curling rink costs taxpayers X amount of dollars, and we have to decide whether we want it or we don't want it. I think we would be a little bit of a strange Western Canadian community if we didn't have a curling rink. I mean, this is pretty traditional in Western Canadian communities. How we would fund that, we have to go to the different levels of government. There's no way the town of Drumheller can afford millions of dollars in infrastructure. So until the federal government, provincial government step up, there's no way we can solve that problem.
Same question to Kaelon Sykes.
Curling. Curling. Hmm. I've only played a few times in school, and when I played, I thought it was awesome. I've been to the facility, the curling facility, a few times. Friends, it was amazing, had blast. If we could find the money to do a few upgrades for it, I would really love if we could do that, because I definitely think this community needs the curling facility.
Same question to Dwayne Nagy.
I as well would like to, like to see the curling rink be part of our long-term plan, but as well, we do have to see how best to fund that. And if that means, you know, delving into the books, looking for innovative ways to raise the funds needed to ensure that that can remain part of our community moving forward, then I think that's the job of council. If I liked it, I'd like to do that. So I see it as part of, as part of our future, given the right circumstances. Thank you.
Same question to Mr. Alan Kendrick.
Thank you. When you said 70 years old, you're right. The operating numbers that you've given us are probably reasonably represented, but at the end of the day, it needs a new roof, it needs structural repairs. I'd like to see a new curling rink at some point. I don't know how we would get there, other than the grant process. The way it sits now, it's hopefully we can keep it going, and people can still utilize the facility. I think at some point, if the funding just doesn't show up, we're going to be in the pickle and have to take it down, because it's going to be unsafe.
Same question to Margaret English.
Thank you. You're asking someone who's not on council, so I don't have facts and figures that I can back up whatever I say with that. However, I can't see that a community here without a curling rink. And there's fundraising for many purposes. I'm sure there could be fundraising for this as well, and as they were saying, grant processes. Other than that, I can't expound any further on that. Thank you.
So it's 8:28. We're probably going to get a couple more questions, and then each candidate will have a one minute to wrap up, and then we'll get out of here. Still no score from the game. Still good. The next question, I'll start with Cheryl Shaw. If elected as mayor, would you reconsider revisiting the idea of a tourism levy that would be used to market Drumheller as a destination to visitors from around the world?
Since I worked in the tourism industry, I did vote against the levy that was mandatory, because I don't believe it's a bylaw. I don't think there should be a bylaw. Would I revisit it? Of course. I'm very open to different ideas, and certainly would look at it. Right now, the tourism levy is done by hotels. So the idea was to have it to do campgrounds and B&amp;Bs, et cetera. So yes, I would certainly look at it and take the advice of the residents and council. Thank you.
Ironically, I've asked a lot of people about their input on this tourist levy, and it's definitely a bone of contention. I think there's definitely different ways of approaching. I know different businesses have offered that are involved with tourism that would be willing to give funds to help make, for example, tourist booths at the opposite end of each town, put bathrooms out there. They're willing to put their money there. They don't believe that going after the tourists is the way. And so I think this has to be a whole different avenue to look at. There's way more options available than on always taxing people. We just got to find different ways to find avenues to get the funding. Thank you.
The next question has to do with unifying our communities. How would you work to unify the outlying communities of East Cooley, Rosedale, Wayne, and Macklinne with Central Drumheller? And I'd like to start with Greg Poulson, please.
For something like that, to get all the communities together, simple as something, you know, like the question we had earlier on the ski hill. Make that into a center point for the town to do different functions, to just go out and hang out with each other and have a bonfire or things like that. There's been a lot of rinks being built right now, and you know, Macklinne's been crying for volunteers. Rosedale had their new rink built. I saw the town had a lot of their folks doing that. It's just everyone helping each other and volunteering and just asking for help and get to know people. You know, I know a few people out in East Cooley. I know a few people in Rosedale. But, you know, it's probably the same for all of you. We all don't know everybody, and we need to do that. Thanks.
Same question to Tony Locker.
When we came to Drumheller back in 96, there was a ward system, and there was individual East Cooley and Rosedales and Drumhellers. We went through that amalgamation, and I almost scratched my head why the town was chopped up so much. Since then, community is community. Drumheller's my community. That includes Drumheller proper. We need, we need to pull it together to make it look like that. I know there are some lines that might be drawn out there for that. But to me, it's no different than a suburb in a big city. Drumheller needs to be strong together, and that includes all three. Thanks.
Same question for Lisa Hansen-Zachrak.
That's a unique one. Just like each community within the town proper of Drumheller is That's a unique one, just like each community within the town proper of Drumheller is unique. But I think there's more in common than what divides us. And I believe that each community has its own community centers. And I feel that perhaps maybe we need to implement, one day a year, the community centers get together and we all talk, discuss ideas, what could actually bring us together. Other ideas would be maybe a bit more of a focus on council towards infrastructure projects to the west, to the east end of our communities. Start working on beautification of those entrance signs, rather than just focusing on the south and the north. But definitely, there's many ideas that we could throw around and improve it. Okay.
The same question to Jay Garbutt.
I want a different question, because I really want to go with that water rates one. It's, you know, as someone who was a transplant, I've been here for almost 20 years, but I came from Red Deer and Edmonton, and in both locations, they had ward systems. It was still, though, you were from Red Deer. And so coming to Drumheller and realizing there were these regional factions, these tribes, that had never been able to come together before, at least felt alienated, was really foreign to me. Because I don't see us as having disparate needs. You took the words right out of my mouth, Lisa, that we have so much more in common than anything. And yet it is true that some of those areas are treated unfairly, and that's got to stop. I mean, I know in our first year, we were talking about snow removal. It's ridiculous that we would send a plow all the way out to East Cooley on the highway to do one road and come all the way back, when there's only five roads. It just would mean come back to Drumheller a little bit later, because their access to the highway is their access to the necessities of life. So I think we can do harder to make sure the town takes leadership.
Thank you, Jay.
Hold me on.
Elizabeth Gallagher.
Well, I'm one of those people who has a home in Rosedale, and of course, I spend time in East Cooley, also own property there. And I'm very concerned about the areas in the east. I don't think that they have anyone to speak for them, and I think they should. The water issue was something that was very important to the people of East Cooley, and I think they were pretty much ignored. The people of Wayne, excuse me, they don't have a sewer system. And because of all the breaches, they're paying atrocious amounts of money to have their sewer dumped, especially the hotel. And he told me that he was spending $40,000 during the summer to have his sewage dumped every month. And I just, I find it hard to believe, but they need services. Drumheller isn't the only place, and I think that they should be looked at. Thank you.
Christine Demond.
I believe that the number one thing that's going to unify communities and bring us all together as one is, of course, communication. People have been talking about the ward system, and I actually had a really good conversation with my father, who pointed out that this was a good method of having these small get-togethers happen. And that's where the communication started. And I feel like if we did at least have groups like Midland and stuff like that, that got together and talked, maybe they could narrow down their issues and stuff like that, bring it to council, and we can better tackle these things head-on. Because without communication, you know, we're not going to be together. So we got to start talking. Thank you.
Okay, can I have my mic back on? All right, we're going to do two more questions. Let me just get my order here. The next group is Peter Rhodes, Tara McMillan, Fred Macawicki, Patrick Kalatha, and John Graham. The question is, currently only a fraction of the 500,000 visitors to the Royal Tyrell Museum visit downtown. There have been many ideas presented to encourage downtown visitation. What kind of initiative would you work on and support to encourage visitors to visit our downtown core? And I'll start with Peter Rhodes.
Well, I've talked to a lot of people about the downtown core. You could go to downtown core at 6 o'clock on a Saturday night and shoot a cannon down the middle, and nobody'd see it. We need to tell, you know, the thing is that 70% of all shopping is done after 6:00 p.m. We want people to come to this town? Well, they can have a reason to come here. We got to have shops. We got to have all the stuff that will attract the people and keep them here in Drumheller. As I say, I have some ideas that will help bring that to downtown. Especially, as I said, we need a resource center downtown. Somewhere that brings the whole valley together. Not just Drumheller, everybody. What we can do is, we could have a contest, so everybody can name it.
Same question to Tara McMillan.
This is a loaded question for me, because being a downtown merchant, I fully believe that we need a gathering place in our downtown core that is for our locals to use first and foremost, and will be a gathering place for the tourists when they are here in town. There's so much potential in our downtown core to draw on for the locals to go sit and have coffee and do all kinds of things, and build a nightlife and a shopping district that can be vibrant. Thank you.
Fred Macawicki.
Well, I guess being one of the old timers, I remember in '78 moving here and walking down the street on a Friday afternoon, Friday evening, and taking about an hour to go down the block, back up, back up the other side, because everybody in town was downtown in the evening. We've broken up the town. We have stores everywhere. So that gathering place is gone. I think that central location for businesses can be set up over the tourist season and then not running the rest of the year, because face it, those businesses aren't going to make it through the winter on locals buying souvenirs. The other thing, I think we've made a mistake rooting our traffic and doing that change as we did a few years ago, because as a town, we shouldn't be trying to speed people through town. We should be trying to let them go through town as slowly as possible. That should be our job. I think that some of the curves have to go out and easier.
Thank you, Fred.
Turn downtown. Thanks.
Same question to Patrick Kalatha.
Well, as a tentative economic development, to bring people downtown, we need to bring entrepreneurs downtown. And that means taking action to mitigate the risks of a downtown. There are some things that have been in place. We've started storefront grant program, and we started an extensive redevelopment. And what that does, creates spaces for people to be, creates places for people to be proud. And what that does is it creates traffic. And then, two years later, that same entrepreneur that was thinking about coming downtown says, "Well, there are only 200 people pass by me." Now we can save maybe 500 people pass by me. What it does is it builds that pride, it builds those spaces, it increases the traffic, it mitigates the risk, and that's how we get people there. Thank you.
John Graham, same question, please.
Hello, my name is John Graham. I'm a realist first, and I've sat on too many committees and boards over the years. Everybody sits around, "What should we do? How can we do this? How can we do that?" We can't really mandate people to come and set up downtown. I really think part of it is the taxes in town. I hear that it's one of the highest in all of the province. Taxes are that high, how are we going to get entrepreneurs to come down into downtown so that we can have a vibrant downtown? I think that's one of the things, the clothes shops and everything. Look at the Splash Park. I mean, that's done great things for downtown. Look in Strathmore, they've got that beautiful amphitheater by the park there, and all the town people collect there. So I think if we can work at maybe doing an efficiency committee to try and lower the taxes, and then we should be able to get people to come downtown and set up businesses downtown. Thank you.
Are there one more question, right? I get to choose this one. For group number four, would you support the development of a small home community, also known as tiny homes in Drumheller? And I'd like to start with Margaret English, please.
Thank you. Actually, I'm always in favor of tiny homes, living in one myself. But anyway, I understand, I know the concept you're talking about, and it is happening all over the province in different ways. So definitely, not being on council, I don't know the infrastructure problems it could create. But I'm sure where there's a will, there's a way, and it certainly would bring people in. There are those who believe in the tiny house concept. I do. It's a good one.
Same question to Alan Kendrick.
I'm not sure of the sizes, et cetera, but I think the infrastructure to support it would probably be something, it would be focusing in, say, a campground-type area, that type of development, where all their small homes are similar in that particular area. Other than that, I don't think it would be zoned anywhere else that you could fit it in.
Same question to Dwayne Nagy.
I'll concede this is the first that I've heard about this project. So I can't speak to any of the specifics, but I can tell you the approach that I would take. I'm not one, thank you for that. I'm not one that would like to approach a problem by saying no all the time. I'd like to hear how, okay? But I think a methodical approach to make sure that what we've done can be evaluated, or what we plan to do could be. And we need to ensure that what we're going to do is good for all of Drumheller, not just part of it. So, thank you.
Next is Kaylon Sykes.
I kind of like the idea of the tiny homes. It'd be, I think, a unique thing to bring to town. The trick would be finding a spot for it and seeing if something we could afford, and if the people want it more than anything.
Lastly, Mr. Tom Zariski.
Last but not least, affordable housing is obviously a great thing for this community. And I think we are consistently looking at all different types of affordable housing. Tiny homes, big homes, big homes on small lots, they all have a place. And I think if it's regulated properly, if it's zoned properly, then it could be a very good thing for the community.
That concludes the question and answer period. Now we're going to have each candidate summarize their life in 59 seconds. I would like to just make one plug for the Chamber of Commerce. We are holding in this room in two weeks our Small Business Awards. I think we should have North of 100, where we celebrate small business in the community. And I will be back at the microphone again then, if you'd like to hang out with me some more. Heather, do we want them to come up here or do it from there? So we're going to go in the same order as earlier. You have 59 seconds, and we'd like to start with Cheryl Shaw.
My goal is to represent you, the citizens of Drumheller, as your mayor. Do I have all the answers to your questions? No, I do not. But if you put your trust in me as your mayor, I will work tirelessly to represent Drumheller, and I think all of Drumheller. I don't think of Drumheller as Drumheller Central. So I think of Drumheller as Midland, Mackmine, East Cooley, Wayne, Cambria, Rosedale. That's all Drumheller. So, and I would represent you as best I could. And I think the main thing that we need to do here is communication between council, councillors, communication between councillors and the residents. And I think we need to hold more meetings. I have lots of different ideas. Please check out my website at cherylshaw.ca. And thank you very much for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. And on October 16th, please vote Cheryl Shaw for mayor. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank all past and present councils. This is a tough job, and I commend everybody who's done it ahead of the future council. In closing, I was given a comment that said, "Heather, you've been preparing your whole life for this job." And I thought, hmm, I don't think so. But then I realized, you know, he was right. I am ready to be mayor of Drumheller. I just, I don't know how to tell you how much this means to me. I want this job. I want the best job in Drumheller, and that is to be your mayor. I'll give my heart and soul to making the best I can for this community. I make no promises, but I'll work my butt off. So on October 16th, I hope you vote for mayor.
Next up is Kaylon Sykes.
Hello again. I was going to end with something witty from Walt Disney, Einstein, or Tesla. I decided I'd just go with this. I'm here for you all. Whether I'm elected to town council or not, I will still be here helping out the community. Thank you.
Tom Zariski.
So I'd just like to thank ATA, Virginia, good job. Chamber, good job. I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out this evening. I think it's great that we have so many people in this community that are interested in making this community better. You compare that to Vulcan, they had, what, five candidates for six councillor positions? So we've got a good group of people who are very concerned. I'd like to thank you for coming out. You are the people who are movers and shakers in the community and interested in voting. And I would ask, however, that if you know of somebody who might be a little bit mobility-challenged or something, or an apathetic teenager, get them out to vote. I would just like to say I'm going to continue what I've been doing on council the last number of years, and that is what I call a stop-start-continue. I look at things that aren't working and try to stop them. I look at things that we can steal from other communities and try to start them here. And I look at things that we're doing very well in the community and try to make sure that we have the funding to keep them going. Thank you.
Next is Lisa Hansen-Zachrak.
Well, the work on council is never done. There's always improvements needed, ideas to be implemented, and lobbying to accomplish. We've worked hard these last four years to carry this town through one of the worst recessions in Alberta. through one of the worst recessions in Alberta's history. Together, I know that we can thrive. My dad always said, "Lisa, anything worth having is worth fighting for." I haven't given up on this community and I hope together we can carry the day and work with our hurdles, using them to our advantage to make us something to roar about. On October sixteenth, please vote for dedication, experience and tenacity. Thank you.
Next is Christine Demont.
I want to encourage everyone here tonight to grab one of my flyers because on the back is a link to my website and blog and there I go into great detail about my platform. If the internet is not your thing, I encourage everyone to contact me if you'd like to sit down and chat. Finally, I also have this printout here that you guys can take along with you that goes over the three methods I described earlier. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and I'll leave you with this. When you're thinking of me as an option for council, think way back to what you thought when you first saw my picture, read my name amongst the list of candidates or saw me up here today. Quality of life and pride equals youth interest. Industry, business and jobs equal youth interest. Forward-thinking methods equal youth interest. Youth interest equals a community that goes on. Thank you.
One, nothing Oilers. Now next is Elizabeth Gallagher.
I hope you'll all decide to vote for me and if you do, I will listen to each and every one of you and be available for a coffee or a phone call to hear your concerns. I believe in the strength of the Drumheller Valley and I'd like to thank the Drumheller Teachers Association and the Chamber of Commerce for holding this event and to everyone for attending. Thank you very much.
Next is Margaret English.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks to everyone for coming. Thanks for the organization of this. It's been really good. It's a great opportunity for discussion. I just urge you to pick up my brochure at the door. It really says everything. I can't make promises to you that can't be kept. I, on council, I would be one of a team and you have to work as a team. So, but that doesn't mean I can't represent your issues. That's what I can promise you. I will represent your issues. Whatever you bring to me, I will bring it before council, should I be elected. My listening skills are very good and that's what I'm offering you. Always I will welcome you when you attend meetings. As I said before, I'm about democracy. Come to the meetings. I personally will welcome you at the door. It's your building. It's your council. Come, you're welcome and I'll welcome you personally. I'd like to make that change in Drumheller. Thanks.
Next is Alan Kendrick.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the organizers. Obviously, they've done a great job this evening as well as thank everyone here for coming out. I would hope that everyone gets out and votes and encourages others. And I'd like to wish my fellow candidates good luck. I realize there's a lot to choose from here. I may not be your best choice. I may not be your first choice. However, I'm a reasonable choice. And reasonable may be the right way to go.
It was McDavid that scored. I don't know if I mentioned that. Next is Mr. Peter Rhodes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. I'm sorry I wasn't informed about a few things. I want to talk to you about disconnection. Our society has become disconnected. We've got our cell phones. We have our tablets. We don't talk to each other anymore. I'm here. Come and talk to me. I want to hear the issues. I want to know in your hearts what I can do for this wonderful valley that I come to love and I do from my heart. I love this place. Thank you.
Next is Patrick Kalapa.
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the local ATA for hosting this event. There's no doubt the community is facing many challenges and has all kinds of issues that we need to deal with. We must also remember that we are blessed to have many advantages in this community. The primary one is the people who live here. From day one coming to Drumheller, I was struck by the volunteerism and community spirit. Looking on this stage, I see people have given their time and resources to this town. This is something I greatly respect. People are our strength and these relationships need to be appreciated, cultivated and renewed. And I wish to make that a priority if elected. The incoming council will need to train the trust of the community. This is for people in all walks of life. It's about making sure people feel appreciated and communicated with effectively, making sure their interactions with the town are pleasant and constructive. So I humbly ask for your support to have the opportunity to be a part of this team and move the community forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Next is Dwayne Nagy.
Again, thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. This is a great turnout. Your next municipal council should be true representatives for you. And we need to, as a group, all of us, need to ensure that we have an engaged and informed council, informed by you, by us, the voters. We need to ensure that our next council are advocates for our community. We need to ensure they're individuals that will invest their time and effort to ensure that the tough decisions are made with all of us in mind. Let me be your voice on election day. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Next is Jay Garbit.
I think that's what's referred to as a smattering of applause. This is going to be fast. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there with us tonight. Since we all love the valley and we all have ideas we want to implement, let me send you home considering these things. First, we're all just people and think about the contradictions in some of your expectations. I think most of us, most of you want us to be forward-thinking, but tonight there were two questions that really involved taking giant steps backward. And so beware about people who are only telling you what you want to hear. I want you to consider that this election is about choosing candidates who are tuned in and engaged to the real issues facing us, have proven themselves through service and will tell you truths you may not want to hear, that are community heavyweights and are ready for this important job. I hope I've proven through service that I am that candidate. I'd like to thank everybody involved for hosting this forum. I'm ready to be your strong and sensible voice on council. Thank you.
Fred McHawkey.
Thank you again for attending this evening's forum, participating in the democratic process. Drumheller holds an unlimited amount of unrealized potential and together we can foster that potential for the betterment of this town. Drumheller is where my family calls home, the reason the long-term stability of Drumheller is of paramount importance to you, my family and myself. The sustainability can only be achieved if we create an environment that is business and growth friendly. It's my goal to have the citizens of Drumheller and the council work collaboratively towards our community forward into the future with open and consistent communications. We can collectively make Drumheller a stronger and more resilient community and I once again humbly ask you to consider me for town council. Share my vision and believe in better.
Next is Greg Poleson.
Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Think by the wide variety of questions tonight. The new council will have their hands go from ski hill questions to the wars, to curling rings, to taxes. We have a lot of hard work to do in the future. True belief by really listening to the people, we can then get a lot of these areas fixed. We have to do it together, work together. We need to be proactive and think outside the box, attract new businesses to the town core. Please, on October sixteenth, get out and vote for Greg Poles and I will look forward to working as your council for the next four years. Thank you.
Next is Tara McMillan.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. These are exciting times in our community. I encourage you to engage with all the candidates that have put their names forward to represent you and make decisions based on facts, not impressions and not assumptions. I hope that I will have the opportunity to be reelected and continue representing the residents of Drumheller as we work together to make Drumheller a place to live, work and play for many generations to come. Thank you.
Next is John Graham.
Thank you. My name is John Graham. I've got nothing to lose, so I'm just going to say I, I think this town is broken. We did lose Ride for Sight. We lost the Pro Wagons, the Pro Rodeo, the Tough Mudder, the Ski Hill, the Harley Dealers Rally. Drumheller has high taxes. I think that we have to work together. There's disconnect with the community. I'm sure the council has worked hard. I know what the council is like. And we have to work together. I'm a go-getter. People say they should do this and they should do that. There's no they. We are they. We have to work together. We have to get things done. Like Albert Landry, a good friend of mine, said years ago, "John, people either like you or they don't like you. There's no in-between." While I'm asking that you vote with your minds because you know I will get things done. Thank you very much.
Next is Tony Locker.
Thank you all for attending this very important forum tonight. In closing, I'd just like to highlight my passion for this town. I love what it is today, but I'm even more excited what it can be tomorrow. With the right players at the table, we can make this happen. I'm ready to be that player and I'm willing to work hard to make it happen. Please consider a vote for Locker on October sixteen. Thank you and good night.
Well, thanks for putting up with me tonight. While I have the mic and I still have a little bit of control, I just want to throw one idea that as a president of the Chamber of Commerce, we've floated in Drumheller. And one of the things we talked about tonight is how we can all feel good about ourselves and our community. And we at the Chamber of Commerce have thrown out the idea of merging our event, which is Small Business Week in two weeks, with some other events in town to really and truly have what is, what I would call a great celebration of everything that is amazing about this valley. So that's an example of something that the Chamber has floated out to some other groups in town. So there are ways that we can work together as opposed to being divided. I'd like to thank all of the candidates tonight. Again, I want to reiterate, there is early polling tomorrow. There is early polling on the fourteenth and election day is the sixteenth of October. Polling stations throughout the valley will be open from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I've already told you about advanced polling. I would like to thank everyone for attending this evening. Thank you to everyone who put in a lot of work and preparation tonight. Thank you to the teachers union that helped out. And most importantly, thank you to all of you who truly care about our valley because if there was no one here tonight, you know, I think we would have a much larger issue. But this is a great place to live and I think everyone up here, including myself, believes that this is an amazing community and we have a bright path forward. So in closing, I just want to say one more time, the candidates will receive a copy of all the questions tonight. So the ones that they were not able to answer in our timeframe, they will be able to respond on their social media. And that concludes our forum. Thank you.